Order trustees work session. We will start at six, so we had a pleasure legion to the flag and then we'll start. I pleasure legion to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivi- liberty. And just a sprawl. Are we coming through okay?
Yes, uh, we're through the administrator's side, yes. We hear you fine.
Alright. We're gonna have a moment of silence to honor our military firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies that they serve our community.
I think somebody needs to mute because it's interfering with the conversation. The one that says pound, pound, could you mute please? That's thyroid, go ahead.
May we have a roll call, please?
Um, trustee McGuire. Trustee man.
Present.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Alright.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Oh, I'm done.
Review approval of prior meeting minutes. We don't have any meeting, any minutes for this meeting, is that correct?
We do that in a work session?
Um, I didn't, I don't have any minutes to review.
We do that.
Trustee McLaughlin.
We don't do that in a work session, do we?
I don't know, you don't. So you might want to discuss them.
Okay, that I follow, okay, okay.
Okay, let me make sure. Okay, do we have any old business to discuss?
Well, you brought up, um, old business, uh, trustee man, you brought up minutes. Um, you know, that's been an issue for quite a while. I don't know if we're gonna readdress that, um, at some point in time and do what everybody else does and go back to word to word. Uh, we can't make any decisions in a work session, but, uh, the process we're using, um, really truly is not working.
Okay. Let's deal with the, with the minutes at our next work session.
Okay.
And in the meantime, I will find out if, uh, the lady was contacted that did some of the minutes for us on the latest meeting and let her review some of those minutes. And then we can review that and make a decision on what we're gonna do. How does that sound to you, Mike?
Thank you, yes.
Alright. Any other old business do we have?
Um, we discussed, it's been several meetings back and I just don't know if we ever came in into it. We were gonna refi- do some refinancing. Um, and I thought it had to do with some fire stuff. You meant, does that bring anything to you there, Greg Wilcox? Um, well, we're gonna, we, we, I, I thought Steve brought a motion out, we was gonna refinance some stuff and then we never went anywhere with it. And, and, or maybe I'm confused.
That meeting was the only time that I was made aware of it, uh, I've not heard any follow-up on it.
Okay, so we started refinancing something?
Uh, quickly, after the night, I was ready to afford to do that. Uh, the request was strictly to start doing it and, and trust and stable back decisions. So nothing's been done.
Is anybody else having a hard time understand what he's saying? I, I, he's real, some, something's wrong with your microphone or something. I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying.
It's overdriven, the microphone's up too high. Might check down in the bottom corner, microphone and settings and see if you can lower that down a little bit, Mr. Wolf.
And then repeat what you said, cause we couldn't understand you.
No, I'm running low. Trustee McLaughlin, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the help, uh, can you see? I'll go see if I can repeat what I said. I'll prove you in our request that night. Um, tried to go back, go out and refinance those loans. And, uh, so nothing's been done because you didn't authorize it. We weren't authorized, we were asking for refi- the ability to check on refinance rates. Uh, we've handled it that night, nothing's been done by trustees since.
So, so do we have a chance to refinance something at a better rate? Is that, and, and we just never proceeded on with that, or?
We had the probability to look at different rates, uh, there was not a shopping at the rents when we took the loan to begin with. It was strictly a rent term, Republic Bank. And, uh, and there's nothing on fire that those, those, like if there was any of the complaints, it's a good thing to try to refinance in this market today. If our interest rates go up. So I was trying to recommend that the township send money by looking at possible refinance of your current debt. That was my suggestion.
Okay.
If it's not possible, it's not possible, but we couldn't go past stepping because the trustees did not permit it.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Wolf, you said that the trustees did not permit the refinancing?
The system was wrong, uh, Mr. Man, uh, to add that meeting, uh, but it was taken. Uh, so we played it out and, and asked for rates, I mean, we're not allowed to. You had to have the permission of trustees to, uh, ask to go out to financial partners to try to refinance. I want to bring the facts back to you. We, uh, we had to layer the facts to support that we're financing your court attack. That, uh, may have been able to get you a cheaper rate on the term, the, the name from Republic Bank. The termetics had a two vehicle, but we never could go any further because it was non-refundable. But, uh, we just didn't take it with, with the term that night, but they, they didn't gain approval that night.
Okay. So, Mr. McLaughlin, what do you wanna do to him to continue with that? Or?
Well, I, I, I guess I don't know enough information to really make a sound decision in that, you, you know, like your own personal finances, what interest rate am I paying on my debt that I have? And so what interest rate are we paying on the debt that we have for the township? And can we get a better, lower rate? I don't wanna refinance just to burn up equity and put money in the bank, um, that's not a good idea, but if we can, um, the interest rates are pretty low, I don't know if we're gonna get any lower of, I don't know if it's worth doing. I don't have enough information to really make a solid decision on that, but if, if we can get a lower rate on something, you know, it's worth doing.
Mr. Wolf, can you follow up on that and, uh, check and have it something ready at the next meeting?
Uh, and I wanted to be clear, the question is, are not refinancing anything until you assume the rates? If it's a low bill, you're gonna say no. If it's a good bill, we're gonna say yes, but we don't need it's out there like Mr. McLaughlin just stated. So we, we, we took our current note and we went to like to shop it. And, uh, see if there's anything optional out there, and that, that's a good read for any debt that you have on your, in the township. Um, and that's why it's suggested under the higher revised code that every five years, the township revisits their financial partner just to make sure that you're getting the right rates and, and service, uh, with your financial, but it's only suggested, it is not a law. But, uh, if you're saying that you want me to take that and shop it, I will do it.
Okay. Uh, go, uh, go ahead and do that and, uh, let us know exactly where we are.
Okay, we'll keep this together and I'll keep you informed on the process itself. Thank you.
Okay. Any other old business?
Trustee man, I have some, some comp questions, I guess, um, maybe some business. But today and several times in the past, I put my key in the door at Calumna Center and it gets stuck. When I pull it out, I end up scratching my hand, I got three scars on my hand because of the door, can't get the key out. And I scratched up my hand, I did it again today. My question to you is, we have a swipe card system we purchased, we paid seventy-one thousand dollars, that's not working. When is it gonna get finished? Not you trustees, not just to you, Mr. Man.
Um, Mr. Wolf, do you have a, can you answer that question?
Yes, we are, uh, in the processing. Programming the system is nowhere out today. And as you know, you, uh, you're a new assistant that was doing the bulk of my work has resigned her position. We have to enter through individual employee and then give clearance. Each individual employee are under the pressure of red buildings and red access by receipt. That is a control feature of the system and, uh, and HSI is working with us. So it's, the, the bulk of the work is hazardous and sudden, dangerous. About weapons to be entered, every individual has to be programmed. And they're going to have the appropriate department managers and trustees about its access to where. Uh, hopefully, HSI thought that they could, uh, really go involved, everything their staff can give out to, uh, uh, access to, to their factory from the assistant team, and that wasn't part of the contract. So that was the start off and play back. To answer the question to you, Tracy, if you don't mind, this is the first time you've ever said anything to me about the problem. You can, uh, fix the temporary problem by even by talking through the locksmith. Fix your problem, it turns a problem by staffing your key. Uh, in terms of, of what we're just.
Okay, Mr. Mr., um, Wolf. First of all, I can't, I heard you say something, a question to me, but most of the conversation I couldn't understand, but I did hear about the locksmith. And it's not just my key, I talked to several other people, it's other people's key as well. So it's not the key, it's the door.
Yeah, I had the issue, I had the issue there today. Now, I was thinking about, when I, I almost brought it with me today, these, you take, a lot of times, you just take a little tube of powder graphite and you can squeeze it in that lock and a lot of times that help. I'm not a locksmith and it's not my lock, but I know in other places I go to, you know, sewer plants and everything that, um, I attend once a day or something and I'm the only one going in there, but that does seem to help. But, um, and then about the audio, didn't we see funding? Didn't you just get a brand new computer, Steve? And if he did, why is the audio so bad?
Well, I'm not having a new computer. I'm not, I'm just saying, I had it, uh, to the fire station. I can't fix it right now because it, it is not obviously working right. And I don't consider this, thank you, I need a new computer, I've got a lot of new computer. But the segment, very many.
Just, Justin was in today and said he was gonna send John, scheduled John to come out next week. Uh, Steve, could you make sure you maybe talk to John and see if he can do something about it?
Absolutely. I would, um, but, uh, to answer it quick, that outside lock is supported by the county with center, which is the government party. So I will call in Thursday and morning since this is the first time anybody's planned with my department, and attached you have, pardon me. I will call the county and we will get, let it use that temporary issue done.
But this is not, I mean, this is serious, cause I mean, I was bleeding all three times, so I didn't realize. I knew I scratched myself, but then I, I, I bleeding, so I'm upset about it because of that. Three times the morning just healed, the next morning comes with this heal. But I'm also upset because we spent, and I didn't hear all your conversation, maybe you explain to us. Because we spent all that money on the system and it's not working. Um, I, I don't know if you said the trustees need to make a decision or what you said. Am I coming clear to everybody else?
Yes, yes.
And, and I just wanted to, I wanna know when we get, we pay money. And to me, that should be done, whatever the circumstances is. With the trustees already made their decision on what they wanted done and I don't understand what's to delay. The, the equipment outside the gate is already rusting and we don't even have the system fixed. I mean, the, you know, there's just problems I see and where are these people? Again, I couldn't understand you, you may have explained it, but, um, I guess I need to maybe talk to you in person, but I'm sure other people are concerned about it as well.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking, let me know. Why you can't hear me?
We can, we can hear you, we can't understand you.
Right, 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 right.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We, we can hear you, we just don't understand you.
Okay, well then, I'll send an email out to fully explain to all of you where we are in the process. But it's a data entry process that is wrong and, and so it's not in full, it's rich when it comes on. And so we're working with HSI right now. I'll send you an email tomorrow about all the, uh, like, uh, lots of work going on. I also will tell the county and tell them they have a problem with their outside lock which they owed. And that you were hurt three times, Tracy, okay?
I appreciate that.
Mr. Wolf, if I may?
Mr.?
Your microphone, is that built into your computer monitor? Is that a microphone sitting on your desk or a headset on your head? What type is that?
It's a, it's a, uh, microphone speaker that is some patch, but the best that it's, it's working. Uh, I'd like some good pictures, it's not a headset.
Okay. It's just, it's so over-modulated, it's like the, the amplitude is just cranked fully. Did you check that, uh, settings down in the bottom left corner and see if there was a way, a slide bar to lower your, um, microphone input?
No, I'm down to, uh, four percent.
Maybe you take it down just a little bit more and see if that improves it, it's just overdriven so badly.
But I can't hear you.
You say you could not hear me?
But I couldn't hear you either, cause I took both down.
Okay, yeah, so bring the speakers back up to take the microphone, it should be a different setting.
It's, it's, uh, I'll, I'll have to show you if you wanna stop over to my office.
Okay, I, also, I wanna bring you, I've got a little boom mic that would sit on your desk and just point at you. We could plug that straight into your computer and bypass whatever you're currently using, that might improve it, save us some dollars.
I also have another question or comment. So we've had an alarm system for our wing, probably six months that it dropped. Can anybody give you the status of when we're gonna be able to have our own separate alarm? Because with the auditors being in and me coming in before everybody else, it takes me a while to get up. The sheriff was coming there several times, uh, because I didn't make it in time. Um, it's just a while it takes me to get up to the front of that building and out the door and, and get that alarm set on, um, you know, set to turn it off. And, uh, we have a system that's supposed to be there. I'd like to know if we're gonna ever get it working. I know it's the county, I understand that, but is there any status?
I asked the county last week and they said there was no status on it. I'll call them later when I, when I submit your, your, what's your name, Tracy?
Okay, I just wanted to find out, thank you.
Anything else on old business?
Uh, trustee man, the next thing on the, uh, work session, uh, agenda. Um, I'm questioning, I don't know who wrote that, resolution twenty-one dash oh one twelve. I believe that's the one to approve the, make that temporary budget that we had, we went around and around about that and make that one permanent. It says attached appropriations are not correct as voted on by trustees. Tracy, can you elaborate, elaborate on that any at, at all and, and, and clear up what we need to be done?
Um, I'm not sure because according to what you guys agreed upon, um, you agreed upon, we take it, we wouldn't go through that anymore, we just take it. You made fifty, it was mentioned, I made fifty changes last year. We can do it again this year, so, um, if there's any problem with the budget, if you need to make changes, you just do a resolution. Your trustees approve it and then I submit it to the county. It's allowed to do that, we're allowed to do that. They just need, they had a deadline on April first, I submitted it. Um, now it's just up to you guys, if there's changes that need to be made, you just specify it in a resolution and, and explain it to the trustees and it can be done and then I submit it to the county. And if we have a hundred this year, well, doesn't matter, we just do it. There's no penalty because we make changes to a budget as long as we can stay within that budget.
So, um, you didn't write that line, so what does it mean? Attached appropriations are not correct as voted on by trustees, we voted on?
I did not write that, no, I did not.
Oh. Okay, well, I didn't, uh, trustee man, did you write that?
No, no, I did not.
Mr. Wolf?
Once I released my clause, uh, and discussed. Five items that were included in the fire budget and filler was submitted. By, uh, always just that, if they cannot change, then best friends can discuss in the future about how to change it. But we have several references that have been passed to either court attack. I don't see any place. I, we are, the refurbished equipment references and the two vehicle. I'm very confident since that was straight up in the current budget, it was overall a little dead on the books. They also passed a resolution to buy a new engine temper back when it's too flexible, and that is still active. Also have a resolution on the books, buy new used equipment, pass it active. New resolutions that are currently actively encumbered, they have to appear on the budget. In the budget that Mr. Man brought to me from the mailbox, doesn't show those five encumbrances unless we're not looking at it right or, or even we can prove at all. Even if you can, it's longer. When coming to the new year, existing debt has to straight up on the budget. From the beginning to the end, but it wasn't approved to do on this document. So that's why I wrote that there because I, I'm going something to the trustees, saying that, that maybe something wrong with the financial report. But it, it, this evidence says it can be fixed, and we can fix it very quickly.
Mr. Wolf, if I understand you correctly, you said existing, um, expenses must be encumbered, but we don't have any existing expenses right now.
Okay, so we're in the middle of the court attack. And we're in with Republic Bank, the Italian finances.
Republic, Republic's bank loan was paid in January, so there's nothing paid for that until next January.
Well, you have to ask to encumber it before we get to January. You have to encumber the money when you're in a five-year contract, the money must be encumbered annually.
I did it in the end of twenty twenty, you had to do it then according to the auditors. Because it was being paid in January.
Well, there's a payment, there's maybe a payment for Trump from twenty, between, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. But then that same payment got ready to go in twenty twenty-two.
Go on the budget twenty twenty-two. I did it early because that's when we encumber, when we got the loan in twenty twenty. But then the next one will be in the twenty twenty-two budget. Because I had, I did it all at once because we acquired the money in twenty, in, in twenty twenty. So that's why I did it for twenty twenty-one then, but now the next one for the Republic loan will be in twenty twenty-two's budget, not in twenty twenty-one's budget.
I understand, I, I, I really, really, I disagree. But enough work I will do, the trustees, I'm going to ask the state auditor about how that must be encumbered.
Okay.
If it right, and trust somebody right, and we run, and they do wrong. We'll work it out, but we're still, it has to be done, but our loans won't pass. And my problems that we have, that existing, we have any things, we have that. We have to put that in the budget guys, encumbered money, so it's there to make the payments.
Okay, you're, you're, you're partway right and so, but, but I said, um, this deal will work. First of all, um, do you already have this, um, what is it, the quint? What is it called? I'm looking on this, on the agenda. You said it's missing. So you're saying, is that gonna be purchased straight out, it's not gonna be financed?
The trustees have to decide that.
Okay, so when they decide that, they will then put it into the budget and then it will be encumbered. But right now that money is sitting right there in the revenue and the fund number, which you didn't print out the sheet on this thing. The sheet number thirteen is sitting in a revenue of forty-four oh one. It's not been encumbered yet, so you won't see it on the encumbered side. You'll see it on the revenue side, it's sitting in there in forty-four oh one.
I appreciate that, that clarity. That's, uh, all I have, that closes out my question in a minute. Again, uh, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Man, thank you.
Okay, let me ask, uh, one question here on, uh, two one 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 nine ten nine ten zero 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 zero. That two, two hundred and two thousand, um, hundred dollars is transferred out. Where, where is that?
It's transferred, that is the money that covers all the equipment that you said you're gonna get, um, you're gonna get, um, this year. That's all the money that's been transferred to four, forty-four oh one. Um, it does not show up on there because it's sitting there in the revenue of forty-four oh one. I do not understand why UAN doesn't show it up anywhere on these reports I print. I tried to find a report to print it out, but it won't show up on the normal reports I print. There is a report that will show it, but it does show that was transferred out, it just doesn't tell you that it went to forty-four oh one.
Okay.
But it's the total of all those equipments that are listed in forty-four oh one, including two oh nine, uh, seven fifty, two oh nine, seven fifty, two twelve through two fifteen. And speaking of, I see there was a line that Mr. Wolf said, missing two sixteen. Two oh nine actually covers that one for two sixteen, that's why I asked. Um, was it, um, gonna be a financed vehicle, where you're gonna pay it right out? And right now you said it was, uh, you don't know until the trustees make the decision. So I'm saying that money is included in there for two oh nine, two oh nine. Seven fifty, two oh nine, and then there's the other one for machinery and equipment. So there's several lines already there, um, for some reason, there's, there's a two twenty, seven fifty, two oh nine, you can also use. As well as a seven sixty, seven fifty, two oh nine. So there's several lines already there, you don't have to create a new one. When it comes up and you need it, you can just choose one of those lines and put that money there for that equant. Is it called a quint? And, uh, Doug, you called it a ladder truck, right? Gee. Oh, you gotta turn your mute off. Hold on. You're muted. Okay, go ahead.
It, it's called a quint, yes.
Yeah, so that, you can put it in either one of those two or three lines, so you don't have to create another one. But again, it's up to the trustees, but I just want you to be aware, it's available to put in any of those lines, like right now, uh, for, for the revenue and the, um, ex, uh, expenditures, for the encumbered, whatever, however you wanna say it. Is that clear to you guys?
Okay.
Yes.
Any, any other questions on those? Alright, let's move to new business.
Are we allowed to discuss anything about, um, Are we allowed to discuss anything about, um, the resignation of Ms., Ms. John?
Uh, we have a letter to, uh, of her resignation. You wanna discuss something other than that?
Not even why she resigned, not, um, resigned, but she was there for a purpose. She had a job assignment, what's gonna happen to those jobs, and next week payroll is due. And it has to be in by Tuesday, or guess what, employees won't be paid.
Have we posted the job? Do, do we know, has anybody posted the job to fulfill that position?
Uh, I'm, uh, have to ask, uh, Mr. Wolf that particular question, but, uh, I'm pretty sure we can contact Paycor, and they should be resolved this issue.
So Paycor can, they do everything, but Paycor cannot input our hours. They don't know our hours, each department does that, and then provide that. So there's, you know, she provided you guys a package, every, um, every pad, you guys sign those, that is all done on our side. That is our responsibility. She inputted that data in the Paycor, and then Paycor takes it from there. Paycor cannot do that job. Um, they could possibly, I don't know, I don't know if anybody's asked, but it's gonna cost us some money. If they can do it, I don't know.
Mr. Wolf, have we posted the job for, uh, Adrian Jones's position?
Um, well, because we advise us, we had to wait until the end of the resignation before we could do anything. So I'll leave it to, to ninety for trustees to give me the direction on what to do.
So you're saying, so what you said was, they have to vote it, and then you can go forward with it? Cause we didn't, okay, okay.
Well, that's right, uh, just post the job.
And, and that, that was from Nathaniel?
Uh, yes, uh, it was out of town, um, uh, he was assistant, or the new, um, uh, assistant prosecutor coming in.
Well, that, then that, when that information comes from legal, it needs to go to all three trustees, so we all know we're not sitting in the, in the meeting asking questions. If, if you received that, that information from legal, and you ask a question, you need to forward it on to all three trustees, who are all in the loop and know what's going on, please.
Okay, uh, I want to be trying to be trusting of our own charge and from Mr. Man, following the chain of command. So I apologize, Mike, because I was following the chain of command, because I was over, in charge.
So, so can I say something, just, because this is what I'm seeing, and this is just my opinion, I'm just, if Mr. Man is over, over that as you said, then it's up to Mr. Man to let all the other trustees know, is that right? Is that what you're saying? According to following the chain of command, is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm saying that for your trustees, I've told you what I did.